Like to call the meeting of the Northern Lebanon School District Board to, um... Opening? Steve, Mom, you will do anything to get out of doing our opening. He is away on vacations, therefore we have no approval. We will simply be starting with the pledge of flag.
What will we say?
Goodbye, America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Very happy to take a wonderful call. Okay, you're gonna hear about two more beats happening yet, too. As we did announce at last week's committee meeting, we did have three board members that were not, we're not gonna be able to be present this evening. But since we're voting on the budget and a couple other very important topics, they asked to be in connection with the conference call. Somebody did just ding in.
Dave.
That would be Dave, so we'll still be waiting on Rachel and we'll still be waiting on, um, Steve. But we're gonna go ahead a little bit of some housekeeping issues before we do that first. Last week, we need to announce the board met in executive session at 6:00 PM on June 2nd to discuss legal issues and immediately following last month, or last week's meeting, too, and discuss personality contractual issues also in executive session. So let's move on to the approval of minutes.
Um, I move the minutes.
Second.
Motion on the floor to accept the minutes as were printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. You're a little late, Dave, but thank you. Alright, moving on to the next item, adoption of agenda.
I move that we adopt the agenda with one change, that we move management items, can we move management items A, B, and C to just before administrative reports? This will allow the people that are calling in the opportunity to listen without having to go through everything.
Second.
Any discussion at all? Okay, then there's a motion on the floor to amend the agenda as Dan had stated, new A, B, and C under management to write before the administrative reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. And then we'll go ahead and approve our agenda, even though I think in the motion you might have said, but we're gonna go ahead and approve the agenda itself now with the amendments.
I'll move the agenda, the, um, amend the agenda.
Second.
And, alright, we have a motion then on the floor to accept the agenda as amended.
In this committee.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Okay, well, now is the time to write before administrative reports. Dave, are you the only one we have? Rachel and Steve, are you present yet?
Was Rachel contacted with information?
I sent her.
When was that?
Today.
Cause I talked to her at like 6:15, she hadn't, she didn't know what to do.
Oh, no, she hadn't.
I don't know that she had emailed us. Cause she's right, she's writing to me right now and it's like, uh, what am I supposed to do?
6:05.
5.
4:01:2.
4:01:2.
When she hears the recording panel.
I didn't text that fast! I don't know when it texted. Recording. It counts.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
Okay, bear with us, with the board members that couldn't be here, felt important enough that we wanted maybe ever to have them call in, so, um, yeah, I gotta, like, break in this minute, so. Yeah, no. Call. Call now. Okay. I'll get back. And she's standing up, but when you said count, she's... Did that be you, Rachel?
That was Dave.
Go with her.
Alright, we're gonna wait for one more beep, then Rachel connect in, and then we will proceed. Steve?
Rachel.
Did that be you, Rachel? Are you there, Rachel?
I don't know that, she may not have, cause my text to her about when he hit a recording button, he agreed, he said, "The word was not read."
And she said she, sure she was, she's been on very, very good reception.
Yeah, I can try to call her. Did you see the 865 number, and then you go pounds, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6? Okay. Alright. Try again, and if we don't hear from you, we'll just proceed. And then maybe I can, if we need, I'll put Jones' speakerphone on myself. Okay. She's gonna try again with her.
We're gonna go, we're gonna go ahead and proceed with the first two items at least, and then might give her an extra minute or two to catch up, but Dan, please.
Dan, the management committee, the first three, uh, we're taking now, so I'm gonna write them A.
Second. And for those, Steve and Dave, in case you do not have the agenda ready, turn to Dave. Dan, would you please?
No.
Alright, Rachel, we got you, girl.
Well, alright, that was okay.
Hi, we're talking on item A, this is the new solicitor, keep applying, all me and Laura, LLP.
And we have a motion on the floor, is there any discussion on the motion? Not many to see with those? Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Lum?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Werner?
Yes.
All in favor?
Hey, item B, this is on point, Mr. Saylor as an elementary school principal.
Second. Motion on the floor, any discussion? Okay, if not, then we'll proceed to vote. Okay, England?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Lum?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Werner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
All in favor?
And item C is the budget. This is discussed last week, reflects a .28, 2837 mil increase, zero saw, zero exceptions on the saw.
Anybody like to second the motion?
Second.
Discussion? I hear heavy breathing on the phone, does anybody there have any comments to make?
No, I, I talked about this before, and I think the same thing is what we talked about last week, so I'm happy with that.
Steve, anything?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Dave?
I'm good as well.
I'll speak. I still think we're making a mistake, I think it should be saw, half the exceptions. That's just my opinion, we don't have a contract, and I didn't see a money tree out with them yet, but maybe there's one in that woods down there. I'm just gonna stick with what I believe in my heart.
In case anybody else had heard it incorrectly, like I took poor notes last, last week, our resource officer, can we call it that position? Had previously been filled in by the state police service, that program is no longer being allowed. And I had written in my notes that we had not included it in the, in the budget. I was wrong, it is included in the budget, we did make allowances provisions for it. And the last comment that I'll have to make is, we, in, in the budget, because there's a bunch of new faces out there that were not here last week to hear our discussion, or should have been here, but you weren't here, that's okay. Our budget included no help at all from the state. It's as if we received absolutely no funding from them. If we received the same funding that we had last year, and I fully anticipate that happening, and they said, "I'm not ready to bet my forearm on it," but I've bet an awful lot of our forearm on it, we would at least be getting 400,000 back from that. Any other comments? If not, then we'll proceed to vote. Okay, Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
No.
Sal?
Aye.
Uh, we didn't get to the others.
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Lum?
Yes.
Martel?
Yes.
Werner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
England?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no. Motion passes. Just in case he would want to take the opportunity right now, but I sincerely hope that he does not, would you like to introduce our new hire?
I will. Mr. Saylor, welcome aboard, glad to have you, and if you'd like to say nothing, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Meeting everybody, and sorry for speaking this way. Thank you for having me here, I appreciate Dr. Bell and the board interviewing me. I meant that myself last week, I do appreciate it. Just to give you a little information on myself, I've taught for nine years, seven years never central Dauphin. Most recently and currently, I'm employed as the assistant principal at Prominence Springs Elementary School. And I'm looking forward to bringing the educational experiences that I've had throughout my career and collaborating with the administrative team, the teachers that you have over here, to see what I can do to help improve what's already in place. I also wanted to let you know that I have been married seven years, and I have a two-and-a-half-year-old daughter at home. We live in East County Township, just on the other side of the Dauphin County, I'm in County Line. So thank you for having me here, I really do look forward to working with the students, parents, teachers, and administrative team. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I was very impressed with you in the interview, I think you have some fun ideas how to be reaching out to the parents, and how to get started in the community, and for that I commend you, and it sounds pretty good. The other thing that I'd like to comment about, too, is you did have a life before you got into teaching, too.
I did, yeah, that's true. I originally started at Mansfield, did my undergrad work up there, and I worked three years at Juvenile Attention Center. It's kind of a different thing to pull into the education field, but at the time, I had a girlfriend that was going back to school for education, and she got me interested in school, later we ended up getting married, and so I can thank her for getting me involved in education, but I feel like this is a part of that, and the Juvenile Attention Center was just one aspect of working with kids, and I knew I liked it, that just wasn't setting for me, but I feel that school is where I belong.
Makes you a very well-rounded person with a diverse background, and I appreciate that, too, in the interview. Okay, the three people that we have onboard online, if you would like to sign off, now you can, we're gonna proceed with the rest of our agenda.
Thank you.
Was it something I said?
May I, may I just ask a question about A? In the event that we would need to contract for special, for a special ed? Would, we don't need to have that on the agenda?
No, solicitor.
Okay.
We hired a new solicitor.
But we don't need to have that, how we had talked, we were, okay, I just wanna make sure.
That was my understanding, maybe that. Okay, then we will move on to administrative reports. Clip a point to see who goes first, Dr. McEnroe, thank you.
I'm gonna speak to you tonight about our annual reading carnival. Some of you come in and do our guest readers at the kickoff of that, of that event. It culminates at the end, usually at the end of May, as our reading carnival. This year, our theme was the art of reading. So the stations and the students and the individual classes picked something related to the arts to showcase. They were able to do a infomercial on their, whatever they picked. Some of them picked, like, the technology, I'll talk about the one in the station, they had Home Depot come, and they, we had things with FFA of Northern Lebanon came and taught kids how to plant seeds and how to grow them. We had a poetry station, we had a reader, readers theater, so all the classes picked a topic that relates to the theme, and then they showcased that in the carnival. And then at the carnival, all the classes rotate, if, if you've done your reading for the 12 weeks, all of the classes rotate through the, the stations. We also had a popular musicals station, and then we always have, there's always a couple of fun ones, like the bounce house, and the Rida's Ice, and things like that. This has been an annual event since before I've started here, teachers are responsible for, they do all the planning, all the preparation, and it is really just a great tradition here in the field. So lots of thanks and appreciation go to the teachers who helped prepare that. And the only, the only glitch this year, if you didn't already hear, beginning of the, the beginning of the day, I'm called down, I thought it was a joke. They told me that there was a bear outside. If you remember at the beginning of the year, there was a bull on the playground. So we end the year, there was a bear on the playground, but it was all good, we had it taken care of, so. But it's, it's a great event, if you, if you're ever in the area, or you're available, it's, it's a great day at Lake Dale, it's a great tradition here, and it continued to be successful this year.
You should have seen Mr. Saylor.
I just liked saying, seriously?
Yes, Mary. My name is Ben Wanger, and I'm the principal of Jonesstown East Ender Elementary. Tonight, I have with us Dr. Fur, Matt Furchoff, he's kind of our data guy in addition to being one of our school psychologists at the elementary level. And just a little background, this was the first year for us to have all of the district's kindergarten at Jonestown Elementary, and what Dr. Furchoff is gonna do is talk a little bit about comparisons between our data from last year and this year, and to see how it's looked our first year through. Is it okay if I talk in here before I make my appointment? I can yack pretty loudly. Thanks, Mr. Wanger, he was very kind to call me data guy, instead of data geek, data nerd, data dork, all of which do apply to me. Yeah, tonight we're gonna talk about, really, the kindergarten data, looking at reading and math. In particular, well, most, well, mostly it's gonna be DIBELS data. The reason why we're looking at DIBELS more than anything else, because DIBELS is the one piece of data that we have that we use to measure all kids, not just maybe some kids that are struggling, or different pockets of kids, but all the kids in kindergarten. In addition, we're also gonna look at Dolch words, and so vocabulary words.
Can we, like, yeah, through the lights, I don't see calm, I don't see, there's, thank you.
I can pretend like it's a movie then. This is a really good plot, the ending starts off really good at the beginning, and then it gets really great in the middle, and it's the ending, I don't get it. So we're gonna look at, from like, like Mr. Wanger said, last year's data, and this year's data with our Dolch vocabulary words, DIBELS reading and DIBELS math. So if the Dolch vocabulary words, really, there is a list of words, 220 words actually, that span really from kindergarten up into the second grade. Now, these words are the most common words used when reading an English language. If you know these words just by recognition, so you don't have to spend a lot of time sounding them out or thinking about them, so as soon as you see them, you're able to just figure them out almost instantly, then it's gonna make you a much more fluent reader in the end. So what we would like for kids in kindergarten, this is a pre-pimp primer list, so the first 40 of those 220 words, we would really like to have them know as many of these words as possible. This graph shows what the results look like for our students in kindergarten, so again, this includes all the students in kindergarten, and this graph looks at a couple of different things. So I want you to focus here on this side, this is just the average percentage correct. So of those 40 words, the percentage that the students actually got correct. So in kindergarten, where we started in the fall, which is the yellow, if I can get my pointer working. There we are, the yellow here, last year, students were at 11%, so they were 11%, they knew 11% of those 40 words. This year, the kids, when they started, they actually were worse off than they were last year, a little bit. So when it came to us, the beginning, so we're measuring this, this scale at the beginning of September, this year, students didn't do quite as well to start off the year as where they did last year. However, you see by mid-year, which is winter, when we assessed it again, last year, students up to 28% accurate, we were up to 36% accurate this year, so a nice little jump from last year, which I like to see. And then by the average percentage correct, by the end of the year last year, 74%, and up to 80% this year. So I, you know, I was pretty happy when I saw that growth, at least with these, these vocabulary words. Now, the middle graph here looks at something a little bit different, so I'm looking, not just percentage correct, but I wanted to see how many of the students were above 90% of the words. Cause that, like I said, that's really the goal, we want to have them have as many of those words as possible. Last year, 2% of the kids knew above 90% to start off the year, they moved up to 7% by mid-year, and 51% by the end of the year. This year, again, started off the year at 2%, moved up to 16% by mid-year, and up to 63% by the end of the year. So 63% of our kindergarten kids knew more than 90% of those words. Does that make sense? The last half of the graph here is below 50%, so this would be kids that knew less than half of the words, so 20 words or less. 95% of our kids at the beginning of the year last year, 96% this year, knew less than half of the words. By mid-year, 80%, last year, down to 66% this year, and about the end of the year, only 24% of the kids last year knew half of the words, and only 18% of our kids were at this year. So we saw some nice growth of these vocabulary words from last year to this year. Now, DIBELS looks at things a little bit different, I'm not looking necessarily at just percentage correctly, but what they do is they break things down by three categories, they call core, strategic, and intensive. I look at these as kind of being core, meaning our proficient, advanced kids. That means that they're above the benchmark expectation, or the DIBELS system creates this line or says, "If you're above this line, you're doing okay, if you're below that line, you might need some work, if you're well below that line, you need a lot of work," so that's basically what it's saying. So our core are proficient, advanced kids, strategic are the kids that we would consider maybe basic, similar to the PSSA, and intensive, I would be looking at kids that are below basic kinds of kids. So again, it's assessed in the fall, winter, and spring, and as you see those lines, the benchmark, the expectation where we want kids to be gradually increases throughout the year. So kids, our kids here, our Viking will be, our hope is to get above that benchmark in the, in the fall, move up to the winter, and to be above in the spring as well. And so as I talk about the data going forward, it's gonna be kind of in a relationship, for the most part, where students fall on that benchmark, above, a little bit below, or well below. Now, DIBELS reading breaks down into a couple of main, at least in the kindergarten level, a couple of main topics, so it would be letter naming fluency, first sound fluency, nonsense word fluency, and I forgot one here, which is phoneme segmentation fluency. Which I do talk about, it is inherent, but for some reason, it did not make it under the slide. And then, all of those areas will combine to create what's called the composite score. So the composite score is kind of like an average of all of these things together, not quite an average, but kind of. Okay, well, we'll start off with letter name fluency. Letter name fluency is really what it says, and so the students will see a list of the letters of the alphabet, and they just need to name them as fast as they can, so as many letters as they can name in one minute. There are no benchmark expectations for letter name fluency. And the reason is, is because letter name fluency is not a really great predictor of reading skills, because actually, weirdly enough, knowing the name of the letter doesn't tell us anything about how to read, or how to help you're doing anything else. If it was up to me, we would just call letters by their sounds, although English is such a pain that there's multiple sounds for each letter, wish someone would change that. But just looking at the percentages of where we are with letter naming, so in one minute, the average score last year was about 15 letter names in one minute, so the average, the average student would be able to name that many letters in one minute, and this year, we're at 18, almost 19 letters in one minute. Last year, 34 letters in one minute, this year, 39, by mid-winter, and then in the spring, 44 to 45. So generally, I'm just looking at this, and it's telling me about the same as where we were last year, as far as letter naming. I, I bring this up mainly because this is one of the pieces that does comprise that composite score. When you're looking at that composite score at the end, you'll know that this is one of the things that helps to, helps to make that score. Now, first sound fluency is, is the direction, so I'm gonna say somewhere, do you tell me the first sound you hear in the word, so if I say "moon," you'd be able to say "mm," so you'd be able to label that first sound. And this does have benchmarks, the benchmark for the, for the fall was 10 letter sounds in one minute, and by winter, it's 30, this is not assessed in the spring, mainly because we, the hope is that students have mastered this skill by the time they get to the spring, and it's again, it's a less predictive measure by the time they get to the end of the year. Now, this graph kind of, again, shows where the difference is between last year and this year. Last year, well, looking at this graph first off, green is that core, so our proficient kids, strategic are our basic kids, and below basic kids are in the red. So last year, we're at 60% of our kids at the beginning of the year were considered okay, and this year, 58% of our kids at the beginning of the year, and it was considered okay. 28% of our kids were considered... 28 percent of our kids were considered really below basic, last year 29 percent this year. So really, again, looking at similar what we saw with the vocabulary words, we started off this year a little bit below where we did last year. Not a lot, not significantly a lot, but just a little bit. But by the middle of the year, we're seeing that a higher percentage of our kids were doing better on this particular skill. This is actually, for me, when I see a percentage like this, this makes me very happy. Most of our kids are doing well here, only a few kids here and very few kids here. That makes me very happy to see. Our next skill is phoneme segmentation fluency. For this one, I will say a word and the student needs to say all the sounds in the word. So if I say "soap," they can say "s," "o," and break that word into its individual parts. Benchmark is 20 winter, 40 spring. This is not assessed in the fall, only by mid-winter and spring. And so when you look at it in winter, what we saw is that kids are starting off now much higher than they did in the middle of winter last year. So 69 percent of our kids were fine on this skill, only 10 percent really struggling. 77 percent of our kids here, by the end of the year, and like 9 percent here are struggling. So that was some pretty nice growth, especially from where we saw from last year, so that made me happy to see. Nonsense word fluency, again, it's kind of what it sounds like, is that we give them a word that's not a real word and they have to use only their ability to sound out the word to be able to figure it out. So it's not a word that they would have known from remembering it from before, from prior learning. So if I say the word, they see the word "mib," or "m-i-b," they'll be able to say the sounds "mm," "id," "buh," or be able to just blend it all together to say "mib." Benchmark 17 in the winter, so 17 correct letter sounds in one minute or 28 in the spring. Again, we started off now in winter much higher than we did beginning of the year. However, on this one, we kind of dropped down a little bit. And so from where it was, it's not telling me that the kids didn't grow on this skill, it's just they didn't grow enough to continue to make over that benchmark that we saw at the end of the year. So I saw this as one place where we need to continue to push, especially when we look forward next year, so that in those decoding skills, being able to sound out words, letter sounds, things like that. So all of these things combined for our composite score, so we can look at percentages of the fall last year to this year, to winter last year to this year, and to spring. So really, overall, we were doing better percentage-wise when we were from last year. This score here, where I saw that first sound fluency, we did really well in, we did really well in phoneme segmentation fluency, but it was the nonsense word fluency that brought that down, that percentage down a little bit. For me, I would prefer to see this up in the 70s and into the 80s. That would make me much, much happier. So more green, less orange, less red. Any questions about any of this so far? Math is assessed in a very similar way, just different skills. And so math, there's number identification fluency, beginning quantity discrimination, next number fluency, and again, it all combines to create that composite score. So number identification fluency is the same thing as letter naming fluency except with numbers. So you're seeing a list of numbers and you have to be able to look at them, point to them, and identify them. The benchmarks, we would expect 6 in the fall, at least 13 in one minute in the winter, and up to 23 in the spring. So again, kind of the same pattern we're seeing in other places where last year, we started off a little bit below where we did, or this year, I'm sorry, we started off a little bit lower than we did last year. By winter, saw a really nice jump there. And so we have a lot more kids being able to identify those numbers pretty quickly. End of the year, dropped down a little bit again. It's because we didn't quite do well enough to continue to have a number of kids up above that benchmark, but still some pretty nice progress from what we saw compared to last year. In particular, seeing where last year we had 28 percent of our kids were really struggling on this skill, brought that down to 15 percent this year. Next number fluency, I'm going to say some numbers, you tell me what number comes next. So if you see a seven, you can say eight. Benchmarks are five, 10, then 12. Same pattern. This year, we started off much further below than in the fall we were last year, but by winter, we were much higher than we were last year. And that does hold, but it kind of evens out a little bit by the end of the year on this skill. So this will be something another place I think we could probably target as we look for next year. Beginning quantity discrimination, it's looking to see which is more. So this is a really important kind of basic skill that really shows your ability or your number sense, your understanding with what the numbers are and that they have meaning and relative value compared to each other. So to be able to look at the numbers and determine which one is more. This one, actually, we started off the year even better than we were last year, and that did just maintain throughout the year. We had a pretty high percentage of kids doing well on this skill and very few that were really struggling. And again, this all combines for the composite. So started off last year, overall, below we were, I'm sorry, we started off below this year than we were where we were last year, moved up by winter, and did pretty well in the spring. Overall, we didn't do so good, or we could do better here as far as improving this area, the kids that are considered core. What we did, I think, a really nice job is decreasing the kids that are really at the bottom here. So these kids just need a little bit more work before they're going to get up into this Any questions about any of that? For me, like I said, overall, you know, as compared to last year, what I liked that I saw was that this year, we started off, generally speaking, our kids, when they started kindergarten, they weren't quite the same spot as last year's kindergarten or kindergarten students were. But what I think our teachers did a really nice job of, you know, as a team, was being able to move that group up at a faster pace than what we saw last year. And so, you know, the goal for next year would be continuing that kind of progress. And so what we really hope to see is that this, next year's group of kindergarten students will be even better than what we saw for this year's students. Thank you.
First of all, thank you very much for putting it in terms that I think you all can understand, and that's very much appreciated. Ben, do you have any further comments? I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you have any other further comments, just tag on to kindergarten, bed, drop.
Yeah, no, I appreciate Dr. Furchoff putting that together for us. I think it really nicely displays that, yeah, we made a lot of growth this year, but there are definitely some places that we still can work on and improve in the coming years for students.
I just wanted to thank you for, not just your work for this, but for everything you've done for the district and also for the field of education. You are really going to be missed. I say that as sitting up here, but also as a parent, that you really are getting to the people, and thanks for all you do. Kind of gives me chills talking about data.
Yeah, for me, I'm kind of a dork. Some people do crossword puzzles. I sit at home and do graphs. We can smell our own, it's okay.
Okay, both of you, thank you very much for your performance. Anybody else have any questions for Dr. or Mr.? Thank you very, very much, and we'll be getting to you later in the agenda with some stats. Well, stats on our part, none of you. All right, and then we're still back to you. Nope, we're not. About special presentations. And the East Hamburger Elementary Student of the Fourth Marketing Period is Anna Colossi. Did you mean five? Didn't do that right. So this award is sponsored by the East Hamburger Lions Club, and we do that in the Rotary Clubs, the Lions Clubs, Fredericksburg, Jones Town, and East Hamburger, and they all participate and help us and honor our students, and for that we thank you all. Does Anna happen to be here? School's done, huh? All right. Okay, any old business. Now we'll move into the public input session, and I have one. And that would be Nathaniel Finkin.
Yes, everybody. Could you make Nathaniel Finkin East Hills Street in Jones Town? I want to express, I guess, my disappointment, is probably the best word I could use for it, about the proceeding that happened this evening and that there was a budget approved without another round of public input that was offered, and I guess I'm the only one who would have talked. I find it curious and discouraging that we made no provision for a new contract for the faculty in this budget. As everyone knows, we were looking at an expired contract because we're two years into this expired contract. This clearly is not a sustainable situation. We have to offer a teacher contract, I'm sure we have, and it's only reasonable to assume that the next contract will cost more than the last one, because everything else will cost more the next year than the last one. And yet we didn't provide for it? We didn't, there's no provision, and this was in the public commentary in the Levittown News, there's no provision, there's no outline item. Now, I realize, and President Warner, your comments are noted, we're making this budget with the assumption that no state money's coming in, which probably isn't the case, because that would, I think, be maybe the first time ever, we didn't get any state money.
I think they'd be right. I think they're right on that.
So fair enough. But, you know, the whole point of having transparency and having a budget is so that the public can audit the board and the board can report to the public, what we're likely going to have is $400,000 we didn't budget for and anticipate that isn't budgeted. And who knows how we're going to spend that money? Much of the uproar from the public is how we spent money before and the lack of transparency and stuff. So I think not providing for a teacher contract is a mistake. I think it also sends just a terrible message to the faculty. You know, not for nothing, and I realize, you know, you can take my views with a grain of salt because I'm married to a teacher and so maybe I'm just apt here for my own personal self-interest. Sure, you can say that. But the fact remains the same, which is, you know, the teachers have given quite a bit back. The teachers braced to give back a furlough, they did. Back in 2009, when Jack Byler was fired, there was a scurry to allow for an emergency hire of a teacher, well, we ended up bringing someone on that I don't know, at the risk of putting it public, let's just say, I don't know how well that's gone. The teachers have been very flexible with the board and the administration over these past few years. In times that I would say, let's just use the word trying to be generous, as far as the atmosphere and the dialogue and the flat-out relationship between the teachers and the board and the administration. So to not provide for a contract for the teachers is to send just a horrible message, which is that despite the fact that we extol your virtues at every meeting and that we can have administrator after administrator come up here and say, thank the teachers for their effort in the carnival, and thank the teachers for their effort with the DIBELS, even though we're lagging behind probably almost every suburban district in the county, but still, it's their tireless hard work that gets us as far as we get. Thank you, thank you, thank you, but we're not going to pay you the way that other teachers are paid, we're not even going to allow for a line item to consider what your next contract should be. Puts us in a bad spot. I know these negotiations are ongoing, and they're secret and they should be, it's not for me or anybody else to talk publicly about what's been thrown back and forth, but by publicly not allocating money for a contract, by making this obvious and transparent apparent that we do not think it's necessary to put money aside in the budget for a new contract, you're all but telling them and everybody else, we don't really care about offering a new contract, because the budget is where you can put your money, where your mouth is. There's where your spoken priorities are. And clearly, offering the teachers a viable contract that they'll actually accept and having labor peace in this district isn't one of our priorities. And that's too bad, because like I said at the last meeting, our best asset in this district, our saving grace sometimes, is the faculty. They are the heroes I mentioned at the last meeting, and it has nothing to do with who I'm married to, that's the truth. And so it is a shame that our priorities don't match our work. Thank you for that.
I don't know, I think I had too much dust yesterday, so I apologize for this. Not going to forget, I had two comments that I did want to say to Mr. Finkin, and I'm going to forget what they are. One is just an overall comment, he did speak about the lack of transparency in teacher contracts, and there is a move underfoot in the legislature to take care of that so that negotiations will be done in the public so everybody knows what's going on. So for better, for worse, that move feels afoot, and I just wanted to address that as one of your concerns. I apologize, I don't know what the other thing was. But I do want you to know, when you drove up here tonight, did you notice anything different?
Need to do some work on the sign.
Don't disappoint me. Actually, last month, I had to fix that, last month's.
Thank you. I'm sure the students appreciate it more than I.
Well, I didn't like it either, but it is fixed and it's still on record saying that yay, the district is progressing, okay? Take the high river. Thank you for your comments. Oh, I'm sorry, I just remembered what the other thing is. You did bring up a point and you are correct, this is one of the things that we could have done better this evening. Public comments should have been before our voting, and I do apologize for that, because if somebody did have a comment on the budget, they would not have been able to do it until after the vote. And you are correct, or did do wrong in that, and we will try to do better, not doing that again. So that would be the other one. All right. We're going to be moving on to the consensus agenda. Dr. Martell.
Hey, on the management consensus agenda, I'm moving.
Since we're lacking 100 percent on this management committee tonight, it would be nice if the rest of you would carry some of the weight here. Thank you, Matt. Any discussion? We have not proceeded to vote, Matt?
Okay, Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Martell?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
All in favor?
We move on to the management committee report, and it is also Dr. Martell.
Hey, management committee, you already discussed A, B, and C, so I'm moving to B.
Any discussion? Not proceed to vote?
Sal?
Yes.
Martell?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
All in favor?
Moving to B.
Any discussion? Vote please.
Martell?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
All in favor?
Moving to F.
Second.
Any discussion? And just to, since there are some people in the audience that were not here before, that is a significant increase in the price from last year. It's still a bargain if you compare it to some of the other school districts in our area, but it is a substantial increase. But that's the way it is. Any further discussion? Not proceed to vote?
Arnold?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Martell?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
All in favor?
Any other questions for management for the end? Okay, if not, then we move on to programs committee, which I believe has 100 percent attendance of the committee this evening. Just thought I'd say that. All right.
I'd like to move item A.
Second.
Vote?
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Martell?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
All in favor?
I'd like to move item B. Sorry, I was breaking.
Second.
Discussion? Proceed to vote?
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Martell?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
All in favor?
Like to move item C.
Second. Discussion? Not proceed to vote, please?
Sal?
Yes.
Martell?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
All in favor?
I'd like to move D.
Second. Any discussion? And we noted that these payments did not increase from the 2014-15 year to the 15-16 year. Any other discussion? Proceed to vote?
Martell?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
All in favor?
Like to move A.
Second. Discussion? And once again, the payments did not change at all from last year. Any further discussion? Proceed to vote?
Arnold?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Martell?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
All in favor?
And finally, item M.
Discussion? Proceed to vote?
Gray?
Yes.
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Martell?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
All in favor?
Anything else, director said? That concludes everything for programs. Anybody have any questions for Amy? If not, move on to property service, Glenn.
Hey, I'd like to move item A.
Any discussion? Not, let's vote?
Bixler?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Martell?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
All in favor?
And anybody have any questions for Glenn? Not, let's move on to the superintendent's report.
We have five brief items on the computer, the district annual figures, the recent press releases, guidance updates, principals' reports, and news letters, as well as the most recent newspaper articles. That concludes my report unless you have any questions.
Was anybody able to open that or was it just me again?
No, I can open it. Are you doing it at home?
Yes.
On your phone?
No, on my desk computer.
I mean, open your home.
All right, well, I'll be sure to read before then. Any more questions? Move on to the superintendent's report? Not, let's move on to the reports of representatives. Dr. Martell, TTC?
Continue to be monthly as always and do all the business for negotiations there also. Interestingly, they have canceled the last meeting, we had one scheduled for tomorrow for negotiations, and they canceled that one also. So, I'll keep you informed as things can move along.
Okay, we'll move on to the IU 13. I currently serve as a representative for that. We did receive your information in your packet and I happen to serve on the human resources services, so that's the one that I would like to mention out, but I did, the two of the last things that were on there, you can see that we approved our Act 93 salary increase and right after that, we also approved a stipend for the Act 93 personal cell phone use. Previously, we paid for the plans, paid for the service of all the cell phones, paid for the cell phones, and the IU decided, no, we're really not in the cell phone business. And we only have a few Act 93 people here, not so over there, there's lots and lots and lots and lots. And we're kind of there, taking care and following what everybody's plan is doing. So, we are, this year, offering a stipend towards the cell phone service eventually to, heading towards paying it out. It's another cost-saving method and it was cost-saving, but so many of the, in Act 93, had their own phone, had it, it was just like a duplication of effort, so we just decided that's the direction we need to head. Any questions at all, IU 13 was? Not move on to PAC and Rachel, I had asked that last time meeting, if anybody would be willing to serve in this position, and Rachel Lindwood stepped up the plate, said she would like to be the representative. So, they're not meeting yet, hopefully soon, and Glenn presented me, you can pass on to Rachel. Let her do that. So, thank you. The EIT, Dave is not here this evening, I know they did meet, he is not giving a report on what's going on. And moving on to legislative, I did send a bunch of things around again today and two of them... Two of the things that I really wanted to note, and Dr. Bell, appreciate anything you can throw about. One's about the Keystone, you know, we spent a lot of money making up these tests and everything and, you know, as the government goes and as people make decisions, they might have been good then, well, now we're going to decide maybe change things around a little bit. So, it was supposed to be taking effect 17, 18? And now it's gone back to?
16.
16, 17.
I'm sorry, 16, 17, and now it's come back to 17, 18? Is my? 18, 19.
It's a small print underneath the picture.
Underneath the picture that I scribbled underneath, yeah, there you go. Okay, so I just wanted to, yeah, right there it is. Tuesday, we delayed the use of the Keystone exam as a graduation requirement in private based assessment until 18, 19. So, I wanted to make you aware of that. Right now, as students are not able to reach the level that they should, we have a lot of remediation classes and stuff in effect, so we'll still be doing that, it's just the implementations not.
The Keystone exam will still be given, it's just now that they're looking to delay the requirement that you have to pass them in order to graduate.
And the other, could you speak on Senate Bill 6? That's the education and education law too.
Senate Bill 6 is a highlight where the Commonwealth PA is taking anywhere from 1% to 5% of the districts that are under the school performance profile, as you may or may not know, the school performance profile is how the Commonwealth PA evaluates every individual school, not just school district. That particular score is a percentage, anywhere from 0 to 100. What the Commonwealth has done, or this Senate bill has done, is they've created lists for the lowest achieving schools in the Commonwealth, anywhere from the bottom 1% to the bottom 5%. Those schools will be put on a list and possibly taken over, for lack of better terms, by the Commonwealth, where they're actually, the board will be taken out. There'll be seven people appointed by the governor and several other people. They'll also have an opportunity to eliminate the building principal, as well as 50% of the staff, in order to get funding for that. So, those listings, I haven't seen published officially yet, but I can assure you, we're nowhere close. The listing numbers would be down in the 40% ranks, in northern 11 school district scores are in the 6, I'm sorry, in the 70% and the 80% category.
And from what I understand, this is most likely going to be tied to passing the budget. Like they're going to be, it's going to be one of those little things.
Yeah, I think you could be pretty accurate in saying anything they talk about is going to be tied to the budget, but yes, there's been discussions where that's supposed to be tied to the budget.
And lastly, things are proceeding along, there's a very euphemistic thought that maybe even by the end of June, I don't see that, but they're moving faster and not being passed, I don't think it's.
From what I understand, the governor's still focused on putting all his money in the budget. The Senate is still focused on holding on to their focus of pension reform, and the House is still focused on their holding on to privatization of the liquor program, that's the main. So, I think those three things have been solidifying this week.
Anybody else have any comments or thoughts as you see things? And once again, especially at this time of year, I urge you to read, but I'm sending to you and to keep up on it because it's going to affect what we do. Okay, Recreation Commission, Rep.
Okay, I have a report, obviously, there's no June meetings. Suzanne is out on vacation, June 5th to the 21st, that's Friday, however, she's actually not going to be back until the 24th in the office. In the meantime, I'll be covering her duties along with instructor and volunteer Monica Boards. Through that process, we'll be checking voicemails, doing press release registrations, mail, bills and budgets, and then meeting camps in the morning. Throughout that time, that would be kayaking, tennis, art, and volleyball. So, through that process, I'd like to bring to the board some things that came up just this week in concern in relation to that, that I was not aware of. Two things, one is printing of the rosters. We have some, kayaking is on a Saturday and I believe tennis or art comes on Mondays. With the closing of the offices on Fridays, we may not have an updated budget, so there's the concern of having to get into the office to print those. An additional concern is also the budget and the bills. If some mail comes up, we do need to expedite some things, bills, I will need to meet the treasurer, who has a full-time job during the day, and go in and print the bills, sign the checks, update the budget. The majority of these tasks can be completed throughout the school day when district personnel aren't in, however, there is a possibility of the concern, as I mentioned, with the bills and also the rosters. I spoke to George Kaufman, who's the vice chair of the rep board, they're aware of this process. We do have a key at this point, I am not in possession of the key, Monica does have a key. Certainly, we are willing to give the key back to the district if that's a concern. I just need direction of how I should proceed. I received notification of this, we've been planning this for two months, received notification of the concern this week. So, Suzanne's in Europe. If there is the need to go in for the bills, I mean, certainly, I'd be willing to do it if someone from here wants to come along and be a part, I don't know.
I guess the concern was raised and it's been, just been recently brought to my attention too, I didn't know anything, that the concern could be that the building that you're going into, that papers could be out, well, not out, but maybe in files and stuff, and we want everybody to be above reproach, totally transparent, that this is where we're going, this is the building we're in, and the type of documents that would be in that building. So, that's for this whole thing, and you get that.
Sure.
That's for this whole thing, comes out.
I guess my concern is, one, that this wasn't a concern before or never discussed before, and two, Sue contacted me via text message, asking me, I hadn't received any notification, took several messages to receive this additional response from Dr. Bell, which delayed that as well. So, I'm just trying to get the whack and weight of how this should be handled.
And that is correct, I did text you, I could have emailed you.
No.
But, that's, I was told personally, so I was just, what do I do? That's why it came.
My question is, why it came from you and not Dr. Bell?
Well, the answer to that question is because it came up that particular night, you were there actually in interviews, and I think, it's a board decision, if you want to let a key out to a building, you go right ahead and do it. I believe you can put yourself in some liability, but that's for a discussion you could have further through your new solicitor. You make the decision of what you want to do as a superintendent, I don't recommend a key to any particular district building being given to anybody else at all. That's your decision, though. I was made aware of it that same day and a discussion took place with Sue, as well as some other people in the board meeting, and that's, you got texted.
Dr. Bell, why, just give a little history here, we moved her office to that building, was there no concern or forethought at that time that this might be an issue?
That what would be, should she go on vacation?
That there might be someone else going in to cover.
No, we should, you should, we don't believe we should have anybody going into somebody else's office. Or definitely, a key given to a building, we don't have any follow system, there's no tracking.
This is a key.
This, that's.
We all have this.
Yeah, and you're tracked when you come and go during the district, you don't have that in that particular building, you only have a key to get in it.
Right now, for the duration of her vacation, you said you can get in at least print out bills for the day, or you can't even do that?
I'm not going in. No, there, at this time, Monica has a key, as she has had in absence of her vacations before. I did speak to Monica and advise her as well, and she said she certainly doesn't want to go in after hours either. I, and just talked to George this evening, and he said, you know, if we need to just turn the key back, just to be legit, we certainly will do that too. But then that, that will definitely affect the bills and the printing of the rosters in preparation for that, those Saturday and the Monday classes, because the offices are closed, obviously, Friday as well. So, it would have to be Thursday during the day, print the roster, and typically, people sign off the last minute.
Just because, should be done later?
I'm fine with that. Who should I give the key back to?
Is it a copy of the key or is it the original?
Suzanne's key.
And just turn it into the office stack.
End of report.
Well, so, we're basically letting the rep department sink on this? There is no solution? There's no compromise? There's no, hey, let's do something to get through this and this, address it after, you know, it's been brought to our attention. This is obviously something that is, needs to be addressed. If we just ignore it, it's certainly going to affect the children that are in parts of these programs, and it just seems to me that just good common sense would say, hey, let's just work on a compromise. It was made, if the treasurer has to be there, and the treasurer has a full-time job, let's work something out in the interim between now and when Suzanne gets back, and then we can address it at a more permanent level as far as what to do next time. But, right now, we're in the middle of this, why, you know, why should these kids, you know, suffer from this? It just seems like there's something we can do.
Did you have a suggestion for something? I'm looking at the sensitive nature of the papers that are in the building.
I really have a hard time believing no one knew that this was happening before.
If, Beth, I don't, I wasn't aware. There's no way I would support or defend giving a key to a district building to anybody in that particular nature, I can't. If you guys want to come up with a compromise and create it as a board, that's your decision, but I can't support that.
Are there, oh, I'm sorry. Are there, is there an administrator, is there someone who is available shortly after hours on a particular day that we can, we've got, what, three weeks? How many times do you expect this to have to take place?
It depends on when the bills arrive and what the due date. I talked to Tim and he anticipates possibly two, but he said he could contact to get an extension or depending on. I, certainly, he does not want to step in. They are going in after hours typically, but he certainly doesn't want to be in a difficult situation or have any implications at all, so.
How was the mail come?
Lockbox, I also have a key for, and I have the cell phone.
At the, at the, at the post office.
Correct.
So, the bills could technically be held at the post office or someone to pick up in the evening, then they could be processed anyplace after that.
The bills or?
Correct, we were concerned about getting the bills.
Treasurer works full-time job during the day.
Right. So, the mail could be picked up after work and that work could be done in the evening in the short interim that she's on vacation, that would handle the bill part. I'm thinking out loud here because I don't know.
She has to get, he has to get to the computer. She has to get, he has to get to the computer in the office.
Is there any way to tie the computer so that you can get access to it from home? And the other thing is, is on phones for registrations and that. Most systems have call forwarding to somebody who could tell and take those calls and register them.
There is some call forwarding to...
I'm just trying to give you the options here.
No, and I appreciate that. We have voicemails and the registrations. All of that's gonna be taken care of on district time. And we can print the rosters on Thursday, but it may not be the most updated one.
My, my point is, is if, how do most people register? Do they call in or do they mail something in or what?
Usually, in those last minutes, or usually the call.
So somebody would have call forwarding, and then they, then they could be added to a roster relatively easily. It would be great, but I'm sure that could be done. That would help, that would help with the roster issue and the mail and the bill issue and the call forwarding can be done through the telephone. It catches access to the computer.
I think what I can do...
Where's our geek here? Oh, there's a mother geek. So maybe they work something that he could access the system at home. Or she never...
I know how to change the message in the voicemail, because I have my list of everything. Maybe I could just say, call this, call the cellphone number for the registrations.
Just some thoughts?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, this is, they have, but just some common sense stuff to try to get through to come back.
And it's all in safety and protection tonight.
Yeah, I'm all about that, yeah. I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I understand the concern. What I'm saying is, isn't there something we can do between just abridges this until we can actually address it in a more substantial way?
Yeah, I'm, I'm certainly in agreement with the concern, and I wanna support that. And if the dish, you know, if there's liability concerns, I absolutely, that comes first. However, I, I would just like to have some input, because this is not just me. It shouldn't be just me. I think it could have been handled a little better as well.
Okay, you're comfortable now with what thing we can try and use though?
Sure.
As comfortable as you can be. Anybody?
I really think you would probably, if I need someone to come and supervise.
If the board approves that, is it?
I'll just, if there's bills that I can't... And it is a difficult situation.
Situation of...
It's a difficult situation. I'm sorry, we have to do, we have to do the, thanks for understanding. And if you can talk to Suzanne at a high...
I think it'd be great to have some other than me district representation at the meetings as well. I think some of these things have been avoided.
Any other questions for Amy on the rec mission? Any committees I might have missed? Any new business? Okay, there is gonna be an executive session following the adjournment of this meeting contractual. There's nothing else. This meeting is adjourned.